I'd like to call our work session to order. Call roll, please.
This is Angela.
Roll call Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Brennaman.
Here.
Haley. Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Like to call for a motion.
This is Jeff. So move.
Second.
Tom, my second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those, roll call.
This is Angela. Roll call Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Brennaman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Okay, we're now at the board update. Any of you have anything you'd like to share? Any meetings you've attended?
That's good.
Madam Chair, we were supposed to have a meeting last Friday, a follow-up meeting on the subcommittee on the pilot with the Unified Government.
Okay.
That was canceled. It's been moved to next Wednesday, November 9.
This is just a little reminder, whenever you finish your board self-evaluation, give it to Angela. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have some time to discuss it. And that's all I have. Any other additions? Okay. Bill?
Thank you. Thank you. So we have two speakers. Wanda is running about five minutes behind. So if the board's okay, we'll do the redistricting first. And then we'll go back to the self-recognition resolution discussion later. So Angie, I'll let you introduce our guest.
As you know, we, the board needs to approve new districts this year. And so we have Mike Rim, who from the Unified Government, who has come up with some options and he's going to go through the process. And the board, this is just for information tonight, a vote would be taken. And I will pass out copies of his presentation as well.
Do you consider, or you can...
We're doing the redistricting.
Or if you want to... You can have a sit. Do you even have a seat?
I'm fine.
Okay.
As Angela said, Mike Rim was for the Unified Government. And I think that was the last time, 10 years ago, this very, very topic. So it's amazing how quick time flies by. So on the first slide, I think a lot of us probably know, you know, why we're here, what the districting is, but just some, some quick highlights. The VP charter ordinance, if I have a little bit more information on that. For this topic, I'll leave her slide, but requires nearly population in each of the three districts. Every 10 years, in line with the decennial data, so we'll be using the 2020 data to look at the redrawn boundaries. And the census provides us with population and voting districts that they define them, but we, I don't know if we call it ward precincts. And, and those are building blocks for that. So just, it'd be handy to run through a timeline. You know, it was past couple of years, as you all know, it's been difficult for many reasons. So April 1, 2020 is what the census calls Census Day. That's their, hey, this is the population of the United States. There's kind of goes on and kind of work after. Then on December 31st, 2020, those data are supposed to be presented to the president, but it was delayed due to pandemics and the president wanting some possible changes to some of the language and some of the questions. So we didn't get, March 31st was when the the data was delivered for redistricting. And so on September 30th, the data, that was a deadline for the, the delivery of the data. I actually got a little bit before that. And then in the spring of 2022, I know a lot of you know, the, the Kansas Legislature took up redistricting. And, and in May, they had some, you know, final House, Senate congressional district lines. So when, when that occurred, I think mainly on the House side, they, the lines that were redrawn, kind of split up some of our precincts. So we had 113 and ended up with 148. So in June, early July, the Wanda County election office, they, I say redrew, but in a technical way, they did. Came up with a new set of precincts because some were split. Proved that with the Secretary of State. And that was my kind of, you know, time to go. And then rest of July, and then August. I used that information and it took a while to actually come up with a data set. Because where they split those precincts, I had to kind of back up to the bills and look at what was included. So long story short, we got the data. We got some information for, for you all. So by the end of roughly this year, beginning of next year, I think you all have to decide boundaries. And in the last, early 2023, the election commission, they're going to go back and re-precincts. Because they have all these small districts that were created. I think some have, you know, as low as six people. And they don't want to operate with a precinct that small, which is, it's not efficient. So. So the key charter ordinance, you have to have under the population in each district roughly. So there's a plus minus 2% buffer. Reasonable contact areas, districts, boards, towns, counties to follow up collection lines, those ward precincts, we talked about those. Avoid number of registered voters and other partisan data. And I did that. I just took the total population. And then lastly, maintain integrity of broadly cohesive areas of interest. So just some quick math, the 2020 Kansas, Kansas population, 156,607. Divide by that, that by three, we have 52,202. That's our target population. Plus minus, that number is 1,044. So if I take that target population, add the 1,044, the 53, 246 is our upper bound. And then our lower bounds, 51,158. So I, I came up with 12 alternatives. Could have done more. I just thought I'd start with two, get feedback. These may be fine, maybe not be fine. My methodology was to not having any kind of input to start with. It's just change the boundaries as little as I could. So that's kind of, you know, how I approached it. So the table on the left, before redistricting, District 1, population 52,892, there was no change needed. So that plus or minus 2%, 1,044. So I, in these four alternatives, I didn't touch District 1. District 2, you can see is high by 32, 193. And then real close, going the other way, District 3 is low by about almost 4,000. So the next one, you know, it's going to be the map, but what that is going to show, District 1 is going to have the same, same population. District 2 is now going to have just, you know, over 52,000. So with that, 55 in that, that target of that optimal population, 1,044. District 3 minus 744. So we're within our bound for this alternative. So on the map, so you can see, I know you have the pack and the popularity, looked at this, but District 1, they may have untouched. District 2 was higher population, three lower. So we had to, you know, take some population from 2, give it to 3. So. So I'm looking right here. There's three precincts right here. And so if I, if I look, look down the, the, kind of this, this District 2, there's a lot of 1, you know, precinct buffer. So we couldn't take this one. And that would, that would bicep 2. So, so this was alternative 1. Yeah, that's all I got on that. So we'll, we'll look at the, unless there's questions, we can look at the second. Second alternative, this, this first table is, it's set up the same before redistricting. And then after redistricting, again, District 1 stayed the same. And we're within our bound on, on 2 and 3. And if we look at the map on the next slide, so, so in this alternative, you know, I, I just, you know, kind of went on, I'll say the east side. And again, we couldn't take anything from 1. So we're really working around this, this, this boundary right here.
Yeah.
And actually, so, so I'm District 3.
Okay.
So the last time we did this, the two options were the one that we grabbed, which was precinct 9, 4, I think. And then there was another option, the one down by 82nd state or something.
Okay.
So I opted for this end down here because really looking at this map, District 2, for me, it looks like it was set up mostly to serve the western side of the county, but to gather, from the time that it was built, to gather population, they had to come all the way down here to get more house, more residence.
Okay.
So I, to me, it makes more sense to start at this end and slowly, you know, carve away at 2 from the eastern side. So that it doesn't have that, because we're just going to continue to have this problem. Like it's, you take them on option 1, you're making it a skinnier line in order to be contiguous, you know?
Yeah.
So I don't know what there is at the very east end, what the population is in those precincts there. If there's, if there's another way to carve it, that would be fairly close. But, but as it stands, my preference is, is this one right here, because it continues to true up that, you know, allow 2 to slide back towards hyperwarranted with the growth here.
Yeah, I can look at that. So I'm, I'm seeing here from eyes, there's, you know, three precincts right here. My guess is that this little one here, this one, I'm going to have a lot of population. But we, we could, you know, just take these and then maybe grab.
One or two of the others.
Well, if, yeah, if we grab these two, you could grab this one if we needed to, because then it would be, you know? So I could sure, I could sure look at that.
Did you have a problem? Do you have a preference on what side? I mean, is it the imbalance? I just figured that it makes more sense for your.
Yeah, I think it makes more sense.
To focus.
To take the east side for, you know, if I were in your shoes, that's what I'm, because that's a long skinny piece of election.
So, yeah.
I'm sure there's something we can do. I have.
Yeah, in lieu of, in lieu of being able to find other ones, you know, that, that all the categories. I'm okay with this. I mean, this one is be the one I would lean toward, because it does, it kind of fits in where the last got on 9, 4. So they're, they're right there by it. But I would, I wouldn't have a problem with, you know, I guess sticking more to the east side. I just see it that I don't want to run into danger that we're going to cut off, you know? Put ourselves into a situation that if it continues to grow and mine continues to lag, that it, you're going to have to, you're going to find yourself in a pinch point because you can't get the right number of precincts to work.
I, I will, I will just pull the, I'm going to look. So this, this has four persons. This has zero. This, this one has 350.
Yeah.
Now, when we get to, this is 2,411 in 2095. So.
But maybe you take one of the ones that you've already taken and then those three on the end.
Yeah, I'll play with it.
Yeah, and just see what, but yeah, I would prefer it to be the east end.
Just start on the east and kind of.
Yes, anything that's possible. I appreciate it.
Okay.
So this is one, how far do they go now? Of course, this is one, one west.
What's the border out there? I don't know, around 78?
Yeah, so this is going to be 77, 78. So second, roughly?
It was 81, moved back.
No, he said maybe 82 or 83. It, it didn't change. Your state decided.
Your state decided.
Population of District 1 moves west. Look at the population, does it have people move for the house and so forth? It was west. It didn't go south. It didn't go north. It went west. So the population, this is for District 1, should be all of the 9th Street, should go up to 95th, at least in my opinion.
Do you remember 10 years ago when we redid this?
All the same one here. They've gone and it went south. Like folks that move south, they move west.
10 years ago, 10 years ago, you got more to the west. And then yours has stayed the same. So really, the only difference is now is Tom and mine have become out of whack with yours.
Of course, man. Of course, we go west, District 1.
Yeah, so again, I apologize in that, but I don't have a detailed map. But here's 78. So I'm going to guess that's 82nd Street. Let me see if I can.
Well, if you said it didn't change and Bob said it was 81st.
Yeah. Okay.
I've been through this 20 years. So don't, don't fight when we just, I'm just saying, what we move, that we move west.
Yeah.
Past 81st Street. So you're going back to 78, that's going back east.
No, yours doesn't change. Yours stays exactly.
I'm saying it should change before the west, what I'm saying.
Then you're going to have to give up. You're going to have to give up something. So what would you give up?
You haven't lost anybody. You, you haven't lost anybody out of your district. My, the people from my district moved into Tom's district.
And I think what I've seen on the census day, I, I think, I think you're right. I don't have this detailed, you know, people move, move around county and out of the county. I, I mean, I might argue that District 1, you know, if there is a shift, you know, maybe you need the people to move a little bit farther west in District 1, you know, for example.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with you. Yeah.
What is the southern boundary? Is that, I mean, the divides between 2 and 3, is that roughly I-70 and the river?
The river and I-70. Yeah, for, when I was first elected, my districts were all south of I-70. But then when they added the last update from the census, I gained, I gained one precinct north of I-70 near Central and Main Street, kind of that area.
I can share with the body that the, the, in the redrawing of the legislature, basically District 1 was the composite of 1 Senate seat. And it lost, it gained population. So where it used to end is at I-70, or where the fourth Senate district ended at I-70 and the river, it's now had to move north to accommodate basically an influx of population in 10 years. So I think the, I'm not sure where the fourth Senate district will be now. Don't worry. But I think that it is Minnesota, that where we sit now will be in the
Probably close to them.
But the Merck may be in whatever is, is the district. So it comes to the population. And whereas it normally go all the way down, you know, past I-70 before this. Thank you.
How many, how many people did we gain or lose in the last census? Just last census?
Okay, I should have the city. The county, which is real close, 157, 882. And it's 165 now. Now we're just looking at the city. I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers. But that gives you the scope. For sure, Bonner and Edwards still have, had growth, right? Yeah, it's about, actually on both sides, it's about 7% gain, city and county. So.
There's a lot of new apartments being built, multifamily housing. So hopefully we'll see another continued influx.
Does the board want to see any other alternative options?
Yeah, that's what, he was going to look to see if the ones that lie right along the state line, if he could pull any of those in, in lieu of one or the other this alternate 2. If not, then I, I'm okay with that one right there.
You have to let Angie know kind of what you.
Well, he'll have to send us the new, yeah, he'll have to, or you can send us a new drawing if he gets an alternate 3.
Do you want another work session or do you want this for?
I mean, I think that, I think that if we can get the map and look at it, just like alternate 2 and 3, you know, this alternate 2, and then a third one, you know, to look at them. I'm, I mean, if Tom is, is open either way, really, it's my district that's getting affected the most.
I can provide a little bit more explanation if, if based on the population, if you wonder why did you do this? Not bad. It may come out on the table, but I can connect there.
Yeah, I understand you have to be within 2%. And I'm, you know, I mean, you got rules to follow. So, so I'm sure that whatever you come up with will be.
Okay.
And then we can just.
Vote on one of those.
Then we can just have a short section and a work session after that's been arrived and then vote on it in a regular meeting. I think it'll be a lot of.
And to reiterate, we have to agree before December, the beginning.
I think it should be this year, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The first, I mean, it has to be, because it goes over to the UG for ratification.
I think it does.
No.
They know. It's just the decisions here.
We get to do something independent of the UG?
Yes.
Write this down.
Yeah, because if, if you can get us the alternate 3, you can look at it before the next work session and just put 10 minutes on the work session for discussion. I don't think.
Is that okay with everybody else?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you'll see it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I see you all.
I'm just ready to move on.
Yep. Next topic. Is a discussion on self-revolution. Self-recognition revolution that we sent out to the board for you guys to review. Got Ryan Deek here to go through the resolution, talk about the language that we're proposing to the board. So I'm not going to ask you to adopt anything tonight. Yes, plus the, some of the other things you're going to see in the regular session. I'm giving you two weeks to edit for a week, giving you review of it. What it's okay with. Maybe considering at that point, adopting of it. Ryan, whenever you're sure, ready to get started.
So we're bringing this forward. Now, I think that I've gone through two full negotiation cycles with BPU. And in both of those cycles, there was discussion really about, you all have self-recognized your unions. So you don't come under federal law, because you're not private sector employers. And you have not made the election to come under the State Public Employer Relations Act, which is the state mechanism for collective bargaining for municipalities, then also school districts, except for, except for teachers that are governed by another statute. So even though you've self-recognized your unions, you have no structure. You have no outline as to how it is we're going to manage different aspects of a collective bargaining relationship. There is one other municipality in the state of Kansas, I'm aware of, that follows that same model. And I actually represent them and have advised them on their self-recognition, that is, the city of Lawrence, Kansas. And I redrafted their self-recognition or, or resolution. They've had unions there, I think, since the 80s. They've self-recognized since the 80s. So, you know, my, my recommendation, and I've made this recommendation as we've been in negotiations in the past, is that we really need to establish some structure as to how it is we're going to handle collective bargaining at the BPU. So that, that's the purpose of this discussion tonight. I, I'll tell you that really, the process that we envision on what we've given to you is that we wanted to present it to you. This is informational tonight. Get your feedback and thoughts, because you ultimately will, will adopt it. Then the process that we followed in Lawrence, obvious, the unions are key stakeholders in what the structure looks like. And so when we did it in Lawrence, once we got some feedback from the, from the governing body, we then went back to the unions and talked about different aspects of what they liked, what they didn't like. And so we, after, we get some feedback tonight, if you guys want to continue the discussion to another day, we'll obviously do that. But at some point in time, once we get your initial feedback, we'll go to, we'll go to the union and have discussions with them to get their feedback on what we're proposing. So who's, is your mouse wearing control that? So if you can scroll down to section 4. Kind of 1, 2. And, you know, what, what I'll do is I'm just going to kind of walk through the resolution that, that we've put together. Talk about how it would work mechanically. And then if you all want to reserve your questions to the end, that'd be great, because your question may be answered by another section of the resolution. So. So the, the primary focus, and, and I'll, I'll say this, is really to provide some structure for our negotiations with our existing labor union. So I mean, 53, actually, we had negotiations the other day and the carpenters show up. I know they represent a few folks, but they have not actively participated in negotiations in the past, but they do have some employees that they represent. So it would govern our collective bargaining with, with, with both, both of those units. The concept is to establish a procedure and, and also to establish timelines as to when negotiations are to commence. When, if the parties don't successfully arrive at an agreement by a date certain, we've identified that date as May 15th, that the parties would then enter into impasse. And then that, at impasse, they go to a mediation through the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service. That's a federal agency that basically that's what they do, is try to resolve impasses in labor negotiations. And then if that's unsuccessful, go to a fact finding. And a fact finding is that, that is, I, I'll, I'll tell you that other than the, the timelines that we've put in here, this is in essence, the, the exact same process that the state statute dictates. Okay, so we're not, we didn't get creative with this. The state process is, in my experience, is a, is a tried and true system. One of the, putting timelines on it, I know that really both parties have been frustrated when we've been out of contract, past the expiration period. And I know that in the city of Florence, when they adopt timeframes, both parties are extremely motivated to get together, exchange ideas in earnest, and come to an agreement, because they know that if they don't, there's an impasse date. And they would rather try to resolve their differences at the table than have to go through impasse resolution. You know, I've talked to other lawyers in labor law, union side, and on management side, all of them agree that and on management side, all of them agree that shot clocks like this are particularly effective in motivating both parties to come to the table, negotiate in earnest, negotiate in good faith, exchange in good faith their proposals and try to come to an agreement. So that that's a brief summary of what this process requires. You know, our contracts expire in on June the thirtieth. So what we had proposed is to commence negotiations no later than January one. If the parties are unsuccessful by, I believe it's fifteenth of May. So that gives us what, four and a half months to get together and negotiate and try to arrive at a successor agreement. If we're unsuccessful, then that creates the impasse date. What the parties do at that point in time is they, and you do this at the state level too, you file a petition for impasse and you identify the issues that remain unresolved. It's not everything on on the table. If you T A'd and signed off on much of what you've done so far, you're only identifying issues that remain unresolved. So you identify those issues. And then, once you identify those issues, then you go to mediation. If you're unsuccessful at mediation, and there are timeframes for all of this, all with the goal of trying to get everything done before the expiration of the contract on June the thirtieth. And if you're if you're unsuccessful at mediation, you go to fact finding. You get a panel from the state, the state maintains, the state of Kansas maintains a list of recognized and certified fact finders who do this on a regular basis. And the parties through, they give you a panel of five, you alternate strikes, you come to one. The neutral third party comes in, you present arguments and facts to this neutral third party. The neutral third party then issues a report. The report ultimately makes findings of fact and and conclusions and makes a recommendation relative to the party's respective positions on the issues that you're at impasse on. And then from that point in time, once that recommendation come that it's nonbinding, once the recommendation comes out, the parties are to reconvene, get back together, see if based upon the recommendations of 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 the fact finder, they can resolve the impasse. If they cannot, and I'll I'll tell you that when I've run these ninety, I can think of only one time we've ever had to go to the governing body for that good decision. I'd say at least ninety-five percent of the time, once the fact finder issues his or her report, the parties get together. And it's it's pretty compelling, right? If you have a neutral third party come in, look at the issues and make a recommendation and find facts. It cuts through a lot of the noise and nonsense luster. And you've got a neutral party who's saying, hey, I think this, I've looked at the facts, these are the facts I find. And this is the recommendation I made. It's pretty hard to turn that down. And I'll tell you that again, at about, I would say at about a ninety-five percent clip, once fact finding is done, the parties ultimately are private a contract and it's done. If they don't, there is a possibility, and this is the the system that the state public bargaining law recognizes is it then comes to the board for the board to make a final determination. So that's that's an overview of the system. You know, obviously, there's provisions about, you know, the parties are, so for example, with with no resolution and without coming under state law, there's actually no legal obligation by either party to negotiate in good faith, which should be the floor for any collective bargaining relationship. Okay, so this resolution imposes on both parties that obligation to meet and confer in good faith. I mean, that's just a hallmark of federal law, of state law, of any good labor management relationship. Without some structure, it's it's like the wild, wild west as to as to what we're going to, as to how we manage this relationship. I think oftentimes it results in, you know, the issues sitting in your laps prematurely before the parties have in earnest kind of worked a process, which is specifically designed not to put it in your laps, to get it to a point where the parties can come to an agreement with established conflict resolution processes such as mediation, such as fact finding. So I think that if if I really believe that if we implement and adopt these measures, we're going to be much better off in our relationships with with the unions. Everybody's going to know what the playing field is. We're also going to be, should be in a better position with the shot clock of, you know, not having to get past the contract expiration date and looking at, you know, oh, well, you know, we we we're building a budget for next year, but we don't have a contract with paid paid actions in it. So how are we building that budget? And that's 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 not good management. It's not good government. So all of this is designed to try and fix that. So before I leave this part, I will go ahead and field some questions on the way that we have structured this. Of course, the other option available to you is you could elect to come under the under the state public bargaining statute. The the one thing that you don't have under the state public bargaining statute, which you have with this resolution, is the timeframe and the shot clock, which I which I really like. You know, if you're you're out of contract under the state law, you're out of contract, you still have to come together, you still have to negotiate in good faith. It doesn't put time pressures on both parties to try to come to an agreement. You know, they're under the state law, they can also file, they or we can file prohibitive practice charges whereby the state decides those. I mean, that's that's a possibility. I I'll tell you that probably ten years ago, the Kansas Supreme Court stripped a lot of authority from the state. They said they can't award monetary damages associated with the violation of the Kansas Public Employer Employee Relations Act. All they can issue is adjunctive relief and equitable relief. So, you know, where you used to be able to go to the Kansas Public Employer Employee Relations Board and seek monetary damages, you can use to be able to. They can't do that anymore. So it's it's actually, you know, they do still file some charges, but usually if they can craft a grievance, that's their preferred remedy. Because those those remedies are available to to them through. So with that, I'll field questions and then I can, on this part, then I can go through the rest of what's in self recognition.
Ryan. This is Jeff. So the one question I have is, on average, or just an estimation from you, how many contract meetings would usually occur between the period of January first and and May fifteenth? I'll be back in.
Yeah. You know, when I worked with Lawrence, they have an even shorter, shorter shot clock. They only have like three months to get everything done. They were meeting twice a week. I mean, that that shot clock dictates how often you're meeting and how hard you're working. I mean, if there is no shot clock, you know, sometimes people, oh, I'm busy, I'm busy and busy. And then you go weeks without meeting, which isn't productive because you come back together and, oh, where were we, right?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Ryan. So how, if if this were adopted as drafted, would would you expect that the shot clock and all of all of this goes into effect for the current negotiation that you that has already begun?
I would. We we actually have already started negotiations, so we're.
Right.
We're months ahead of the shot clock. But yes, that would be that would be the anticipation.
Okay, and.
Well, I let me say this, it's obviously in your control. And if we go back to the union and there's lots of back and forth and we want to choose a different shot clock because this is the first time through, you you guys can obviously do whatever you want to do on that.
Okay, and I know you said that you you guys will be going to the union to get their input on it as well. I presume, well, I don't know, is it part of your negotiation that you you guys?
No, this would be outside of the negotiations, but I mean, you know, like I said, and I'll I'll talk about it here in a minute. When we go up to the recognition piece, you know, when we went to the unions in Lawrence, they actually requested a couple of provisions that weren't in our original draft, which I've included in here, which are protections for recognized unions. That is the contract bar rule and then the rec, the the rule that after a union's certified following a recognition election, that another union can't come and see certification. Those were protections that unions like to see. So tho- those are examples of things that when we went back to the unions of Lawrence that we ultimately included in in their their resolution and I similarly included in yours.
Okay, and then. Okay. Okay, and this originally came up, Jeff, I think because you asked specifically for us to get a policy in place to address impasse, right?
I know that there, I don't remember if I was the one who brought it up, but I know that I was on in favor of the idea that it's kind of hard to go through a budget season, which we've had to do that before without a without a resolved contract. And it makes it really hard to gauge what the cost for the utility will be for the following year. So and just this dragging on and on with it, I think that from everything that I had heard and was presented, I believe that, like, like Ryan said, that having a shot clock kind of keeps everybody on task, you know, and keeps everybody working in good faith. So, yeah.
I I think I heard from more than Jeff that some sort of timeframe would be helpful. And I might have said that myself, but I I think it was more the feeling of more than just Jeff that some sort of timeframe would, you know, with time running out at a certain point, would be more helpful for me to make decisions that I'm involved in.
I I kind of remember that it was brought up by someone, by maybe by Ryan or or somebody that, you know, there is a possibility of doing a policy so that we don't run down this road and run into all the problems that we, and I think it was a consensus.
I feel like that.
Of the board at that time, that, yeah, that's something that we'd like to look into and come up with some sort of a policy.
For for to actually deal with the impasse, which I think, you know, Bill, we have directed you certainly to develop a policy for that. And so this spans the matter. I just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to see how we got from that to there to here, which makes sense. But so you said you largely adopted from the state statute for this, right? So other than the timeframe and the shot clock, what else, how else does this differ in state session?
The state statute, as I mentioned, you can file prohibitive practice charges under that. This doesn't incorporate that because we don't internally, we don't have an adjudicatory entity like the state does. The state has the office of administrative hearings where they have, you know, hearing officers that can do that. Lawrence actually included that in their resolution. But I got to tell you, I think it's a paper tiger because if someone filed a, there's no mechanism to to exhaust that. You know, they they can't file a prohibitive practice charge now because they're not under any, under state state law or under federal law. So that's not an avenue that's available to them. I'd be happy to listen to ideas on that. I just don't, and may maybe that could go to arbitration, I think, as a practical matter. The types of things that that bargaining units file prohibitive practice charges on. This union has filed grievances on and it goes to arbitration such as you you are making change. The typical ones we see prohibitive practice charges are you are making unilateral changes to mandatory subjects of bargaining without negotiating over it. When we do that here, these guys file grievance and we can end up at arbitration. So or you're, you know, you're contracting out bargaining unit work or you're you're sending bargaining and work outside of the bargaining. You know, when that happens, these guys file the grievance, we end up at arbitration. So to me, that that they there are, they already have kind of, or as a preponderant, that has been the avenue that they've been pursuing and that mechanism exists. Grievance process ultimately ending in arbitration.
It has become part of binding legislation. It's become part of binding legislation.
So if, yeah, Angie, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, if the board adopts this policy, it would be binding on the B P U.
So Ryan, if I'm not mistaken, one of the other reasons why, at least I felt going down this path would be in the best of the possibilities was that by going this direction, if there is mediation and fact finding, it stays within the utility and the union, where if we went the other way with the state, like, it would be possible, depending on what is on the list of of items that aren't resolved, like the employee's wages could become public record and things like that. And that was one of the things that I think we want to avoid is is stuff like that.
Wages are public record.
Of the of the comparison of all of, all details for all employees?
Not all details, any special elections someone might take for, say, retirement, special withdrawals would not be, but wages would are open record.
There was, there were things that were on there that were, it would, because the fact finding would have to be done in open hearing, it would be.
Sure, and and I'll, you know, I'll tell you that various fact findings that I've held, oftentimes it's the unions that want those to be open public meetings. I really don't care. The only time, the only time I have concerns about that is, you know, oftentimes there will be specific employee situations which lead to a proposal. And so there may be reason to present specific evidence about a specific employee and their employment status. So I'm fine with it being in, being open with with the caveat that to the extent we're going to talk about any specific employee we have the right to close that fact finding for confidentiality reasons.
But if we went with the state version, we would not be able to do that.
You can actually do that.
Can you? Yeah, I just want to make sure that.
We were certainly told that last time, in the last go around we had with this, that we wouldn't be able to.
Yeah.
It would all remain.
That's what I thought it was.
You're right.
You have it public and I I want to protect our employees' information as much as possible.
So that that's the hearing, the state statute does contemplate that after the fact finder issues his or her report, that it remains confidentially, I believe it's for a week. And after that, that report, the statute dictates that it will be made public. So whatever they put in that report is a public document. And that may be what what you heard last time. Okay, so with no other questions on that, let's go up to the top. So some of this is, you know, we actually, I think, have a lot of this in our existing collective bargaining agreement, our definition can slide down. So excluded from representation in the unit, this is state law, city Lawrence says this, we have this as well under our supervisor employees, confidential employees and professional employees. So that, no, nothing different there, just put it in there to mirror state statute. So that, no, nothing different there, just put it in there to mirror state statute.
One quick question. Angie, do we need, I, I didn't, the employee is, is defined. How about board? Do we need to define the board?
Board is not defined.
I know it's not defined. I'm trying to say, now I'm asking, do we need to define it?
I will.
Because we.
Very good. That's a really good point. We can do that.
Actually, we're about the other one, not just this page.
We can do that so that we don't run into that same problem.
Problem that we had that nobody knows where the board is.
It morphs.
I guess I was unaware of that. Okay. So going down, a lot of the, so one of the things I wanted to draw attention to is to meet in good faith. We actually have a definition of that now. The resolution places the affirmative obligation of both parties to be in good faith. So that's, I mean, that's something you don't have now. Conditions of employment that follows the state statute that actually defines mandatory subjects of bargaining under state statute. So we mirror that, we define what mediation is, we define what fact finding is. So on the representation election, I, I included this because, you know, you all, and I went and looked at the history on this. And, and basically from what I could tell is when you recognize unions, they just came before the board and the board says, yeah, we recognize you. I couldn't tell that there was ever an election or any polling of interest that ever showed that, that, that there has been, and, and maybe there was, and I just, we just couldn't find documentation of it. But in the board resolutions, it just says, we're going to recognize, for example, IBW Local 53 to represent clerical, start with physical, then clerical employees. You know, this, this mirrors state statute, this mirrors, this mirrors what Lawrence did. And, and if you kind of pull down to the bottom, the intent of this is not, all right, looking 14 here. So I, I added this to be very clear that putting this process in this resolution is in no way intended to decertify or make any of our existing bargaining units nonrepresentative of, of the employees here. And so I added 14 to make clear, listen, we're going to continue to negotiate with, act under the belief and understanding that, that IBW Local 53 and I guess the carpenters for their bargaining unit represent a majority of the interests in, in their respective bargaining units, both physical and clerical. But, you know, if you have a group of, and this, this has happened, not, not here, but I've had this happen elsewhere. Employees become dissatisfied with their union. And here at BPU, if you have employees who became dissatisfied with their union, they wanted to change to, let's say, the machinists or, you know, the laborers or whoever they might want to change to. There's actually no process for them to do that, no established process for them to do that. So that, or to, to, to simply decertify. So basically what we're doing here is outlining the process, which, you know, under federal law, this is, you have process under state law, you have this process. Go back up a little bit. So whenever we, whenever you do that process under paragraph one, you have what's called a showing of interest. So they have to go out and get what are called representation cards. We, we set that at 30% of the, of the employees in the bargaining unit that they desire to, to represent. If they hit that 30%, then ultimately you proceed to the next, the next parts, then they filed a showing of interest with, on the executive, excuse me, the executive assistant to the general manager. And, you know, we kind of struggled who to have them file with on this. We, we're trying to find, you know, Lawrence, it's the city clerk. It should be somebody who largely handles, you know, administrative, kind of clerical type duties. So that's really what we're looking for. But we, not, trying, trying to find someone who is agnostic in terms of, in terms of what's going on in labor relations. So over here through discussions, that's who we ultimately picked. We'd be certainly willing to listen to any feedback on who else you might think would be appropriate.
So the, 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 the place where I said, IBW has exclusive right for bargaining.
Under the whereas paragraphs, that's the existing state of what's going on. Right? That could change if they, a different union went through this process.
But it wouldn't change during the contract negotiation period.
Right. So.
It changed the following.
There's what's referred to as the contract bar rule. So there's only, if they want to change unions, they have to do it in a very small window. And so we've incorporated the contract bar rule in here. And then also the representation election rule that you can't, once a unit, unit's been certified, you can't have another unit try to come in within a year. So. So ultimately, if they make that showing of interest, then would go to the board and the board, these are the same factors the state looks at to try and determine basically whether, hey, could, could, can we have effective collective bargaining negotiations? You know, what a lot of time, basically, if I could generalize this, what, what you'd look at often is either too big of a unit or too small of a unit, right? So, you know, you, let's say that the clerks in the store rooms wanted to do, wanted to do their own bargaining unit, that may be like five people. That's, that's what's called an over fragmentation. I mean, it wouldn't be effective for the employer to just represent or recognize the clerks. And so that, that kind of goes to the over fragmentation. Too big of a unit, we have, you know, people from all different walks and job classifications. And it's hard to generalize discussions. You know, they're like, the state of Kansas for a while had bargaining units that covered the entire state. Became somewhat unruly, I think, for the state. And so that, and then those are just some of the decisions that have been handed down by perp. Those are different things. We're not going to change any of the bargaining units with this resolution. But if, if you had a group, let's say, all of the skilled trades wanted to come together and form their own bargaining unit. Well, that'd be something we might want to look at, right? If they filed a petition, they had a showing of interest, 30%, and they wanted to have their, their own union. They could file that. You all could look at that and say, we think it's too small, too big, makes it too difficult to negotiate, all those types of things.
That's my question, would they have exclusive right to vote in substance? That's what I'm trying to do.
To the, the current union? No. No, they, it could change through this process.
Correct. Okay.
But, but once they're recognized, then yes, what, whatever unions recognize, that union has the exclusive right to bargain for terms and conditions of employment for that group of employees.
Okay. For that contract period or until.
Until, right, until. Decertifier and another union comes in. Okay. So let's go down. A lot of this just kind of lays out the election process. So up here, this is, yeah, this is the recognition exemption under 13. And then. And then, yeah, and then, then number two, there is the contract bar rule. So basically, if they're going to file a petition to change unions, they can only do it within a very small six month period of time before the, before negotiations open up for the successor agreement. So that's, that's, like I said in Lawrence, those were protections that the unions wanted to see. Number three, scope of discussions. So this is, this is just an outline of management rights. This is taken directly from state statute. It also mirrors what we have in our contract. And this is, these are generally broadly recognized management rights. And it's all this is saying is, you know, we'll negotiate over terms and conditions of employment and meet in good faith. However, the, the enumerated management rights are reserved to management. And I think that's it. So any other questions on?
You will. Well, I guess the question is not you will, it is, what do you feel is the timeline before you'll come back to us with the input from the, the union?
Well, I, I mean, if you all have feedback this evening, such that we need to go back and make significant revisions, we would probably do that, come back to you first, make sure it looks right. Then once, once that happens, then approach the union about their feedback. Then ultimately come back to you, once we get their feedback and potentially incorporate some of their changes and then take action. So if you all don't have a lot of substantial changes tonight, we'll get this to the union, begin these discussions promptly.
Well, won't the union have this as part of the, the minutes of tonight's meetings? We want this being part of like the packet that comes out in two weeks. So.
It will.
This should be publicly available at this point.
Yes. And it's obviously being transmitted at the moment. So.
Right. But, but I, you know, it's important that we reach out to them, let them know that we want their feedback.
So I'd like formal feedback from the, you know.
I'd actually like their feedback before I provide feedback.
Anybody else?
I, I would agree with Rose on that is that, is that from my vantage point, I mean, from what I hear, it, it represents what's already being used at, at a utility in, in Kansas. But I'd like to hear how our union feels about it and.
And Ryan, you said this was, this is something similar to this, maybe substantially similar, has been used in Lawrence, right?
Right. If you want to Google it, it's resolution 7312. And you can, you can find it. The difference would be the, the prohibitive practice section in there, it's like I talked about. And they, and they have had a self recognition resolution, I think for probably 40 years.
So it's gone through at least one contract renegotiation?
Yeah. I mean, many.
Okay.
Yeah. Probably, you know, every two or three years. So they, you know, when I did a revision for them, it was just tweaking things here. There, it wasn't a major sea change for them.
And you said about 40 years?
I think that's right. I think if I'm remembering right, it was the early eighties.
Any other questions before we leave this topic?
Just a clarification. I think I've heard that I, that board wants your feedback from the union.
Yes.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Mary, I tried to gauge how long both conversations could go. That's why I started at 4:30. I knew these were two topics that probably draw a lot of, a lot of discussion, but the issue a little bit early, so.
Okay. I think everybody enjoys having a break before regular meeting.
All right.
We're done for now. Okay. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
This is Jeff. Move to adjourn.
Rose, I second.
Good move. In second, roll call, please.
Angela, roll call, Brian.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Brennaman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Island. Vivenny Henry.
Hi.
That motion carries the work session as adjourned.